Mayor Anderson. Present. Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Mayor Rainey.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor. We are called to order. Commissioner Lucas, would you lead us in the prayer and pledge, please?
If you please stamp your heads.
Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions for the city. We ask that you continue to bless our city, God. We thank you for what you're doing. Give us wisdom tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda? I'm sorry, approval of agenda?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Public hearings, there are none tonight. Citizen comments, Ms. Johnson, do we have anyone?
Yes, ma'am, we have five tonight. The first one is Ms. Kathy Pring.
Hi, if you'll tell us your name and your address and just a reminder that you have three minutes.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
My name is Kathy Pring. I'm at 7101 Westview Boulevard. Westview Boulevard is the feeder street that goes into Harding Drive. It is also, if you look on Highway 100, the very next street to Overby Drive, which, by the way, is already a completed road and goes for miles. So today I'm asking you to close the traffic on Harding Drive and leave our neighborhood out of the new development. You're aware we already have trouble with our roads and that they can't take the weight. You're also aware that we have one entrance and that we've thrived. And emergency services will cover this new development as they do ours and as they do all the Fairview's various neighborhoods. I believe the mayor has a plan that you can support. I really hope that you can work together and that you will close Harding Drive to through traffic. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson. Mr. Jerry McCarty. Mr. McCarty, if you'll tell us your name and your address, please.
Name's Jerry McCarty, 7120 Harding Drive.
And you have three minutes.
If you'll remember, several of us were here just two weeks ago concerned about a vote that would disrupt our quiet little neighborhood. We were disappointed in the vote to annex property that added about 35 acres to the end of Harding Drive, connecting it over to Overby Road. We're still concerned that you will be asked very soon to rezone that for higher-density development. That's why you're hearing from us again tonight. Several of you gave us assurances that you would oppose more than one house per acre, but we're still worried that would happen and destroy the street we live on. I understand one of the goals of the 2040 Long Range Plan is to protect existing neighborhoods like ours. This vote will tell us how much you all truly believe in our community and the plan you've adopted to protect it. I also understand the mayor and city staff have come up with a plan to help with our predicament that involves a permanent solution by making Harding Drive a dead-end road, like it has been for more than the 35 years we've lived there. We sincerely hope you will hear us and vote to secure the future of the neighborhood we many of us call home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Tiffany Wilson Mobley.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Wilson Mobley. I live at 7303 Cox Run Court.
And just a reminder, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Rainey. The last time I stood here speaking was to try and protect my family home, my neighborhood, and our park before you voted one more time to approve the Grove's property that's going in behind us. That vote was very disappointing, and if my family home is eventually threatened in any way because of your decision to do that, to put too many homes on too little land, destroy the beautiful trees, landscape, and possibly the park, I'll definitely be sure to let you know. I do not want to have to move from Fairview. But tonight I don't come before you pleading because you've all voted against me already and all the people that came out to speak, including you, Mr. Dawson, who did move it to a first reading. That's not why I come here tonight. Tonight I come here because I want to address the misconception that Fairview citizens are not invested in the community by coming to these meetings. I want to let you know the actual truth. The reason people don't come here is because when they have an experience like I do, their mind just starts to worry about their families. They leave here feeling helpless, disappointed, and like no one cares. That's what happened to me, and that's what I hope doesn't happen to anyone else. But I'm going to encourage our citizens to continue to come and speak and despite all that, to continue to bring forth their concerns because, one, this is a public forum, it is on record, and we would hope that at some point either our current board or maybe a future board, citizens wouldn't have to feel that way anymore. I just hope our town isn't washed away, turned into a spring hill, or become an environmental disaster by then. I noticed there are several people here for the Harding Road, Westview area. I encourage you to not let it go all the way to a public hearing. What they're saying is valid, it's important, they're talking about their homes. They shouldn't have to feel like I do now, that because of your decision I might have to move, leave my job, and take my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Linda Ballou.
You'll tell us your name and your address.
Linda Ballou, 7118 Westview Boulevard.
And you have three minutes.
It won't take that long. Thank you. We have 32 homes in our little neighborhood, and if you look out here, I think we've probably got at least 32 people. We care about our neighborhood, we care about our city. We're not just concerned about the welfare of Harding Drive and it being closed off, but that would be one big measure, and I thank Mayor Rainey so much for working with city staff to get that brought forth this month. It doesn't seem like a hard decision when things have already been mentioned about the roads and the traffic and the, you know, the tranquility of the neighborhood. We can walk our dogs and our kids can, you know, I mean, it's just, it's home to 32 families, and don't forget that, please, many of whom have been there since their neighborhood, well, some of the neighbors have been there for 45 to 47 years. And so I really would appreciate if you all support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Last citizen tonight is Mr. Larry Page.
If you'll tell us your name and your address.
I'm Larry Page. I live at 7201 Harding Drive.
And you have three minutes.
Yep, thank you. We're two houses down from the cul-de-sac. Every day I come home, I look at that cul-de-sac and how many years the kids played down there and how much neighbors come down sliding down the hill. And our little neighborhood's been really wonderful together. I think I've done a lot of reading on the 2040 Plan, and I think you all support that plan. Am I correct in that? All support it. It's a great plan. I thought exactly what we wanted as a neighborhood and as a community. So I ask you to support this dead-end for us, to keep our neighborhood together so we won't have traffic going up and down that street. It's not the safest street to be traveling up and down there. And if you open it up, there's going to be families, the kids walking to their school because it's attached to behind the school, elementary school. We're going to have more safety issues than it already is, even though there's not very many cars that travel down there. So please, follow your 2040 Plan. Let it be a dead-end permanently so we can stop worrying every day for the last 30 years when they're going to extend it, if they're going to extend it, what they're going to put there. Let's put this to bed and end it. Doesn't mean that property behind there needs to be developed as high-density. It needs to be what it is now, RS40. The RS15s are further out. There's already two properties, it's already been proposed at 100 acres or more, and they're RS15s. So there's no reason to keep continuing RS15 up against our adjacent neighborhood, and that's even in the 2040 Plan, where existing neighborhoods, the newer neighborhoods that are adjacent to it are similar in size. So I ask you guys, please do us a favor. Let's do the right thing here and make this a dead-end. And we'll be back. When they're going to come rezoning, we're coming back. We're not giving up on it. We want that neighborhood that's going to be put in there done right, this community, for those people that are going to live there. Because we care about our neighbors, even if they're on the other side of the woods, we still care about them and want them to experience what we experienced here in Fairview. It's been a great community over 30 years, so let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public announcements. Mr. Ralston, you want to talk about city events first?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening. This weekend is our next movie in the park, the Lego Movie. The movie starts at 8:00 PM. Concessions will be available for purchase at 6:30 PM, and all proceeds from the concessions goes towards Shop With A Cop. And it's just a quick note, we have added the Pork in the Park, which is on November the 5th, and something that's not up there is the Veterans Day Celebration at Bowie Park, and that is on November the 12th, which is a Saturday at 11:00 AM. The city and the American Legion are working together to provide a special event for our veterans for that day. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? I think we have some awards and recognitions. Ms. Johnson, do you want to do that, please? And then I will do my part.
Yes, ma'am. I have a proclamation here for the favorite elected official, Scott Lucas. Whereas Main Street Fairview, a local newspaper, shares what matters most to Fairview citizens, including news about local government, businesses, high school, sports, local events, and more. And whereas Main Street Fairview facilitates an annual contest known as the Main Street Awards, and whereas this contest allows citizens to nominate their favorites in a number of categories, including community, flavor, retail, and services. And whereas, following a four-week nomination period, Main Street Fairview announced the three finalists for each category. And whereas, citizens continue to participate by voting for their foremost choice among the three finalists in each category. And whereas, after more than 12,000 votes were counted, we are thrilled to convey the 2022 winner of the favorite elected official category is Fairview City Commissioner Scott As the mayor of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, Mayor Rainey hereby recognizes the city commissioner Scott Lucas for earning the prestigious and honorable title of the favorite elected official through the Main Street Fairview 2022 Awards. At the same time, I'm going to go ahead, the main body of the proclamation is the same, so I just want to add that also, city manager Scott Collins was the winner of the hometown hero category, so we want to congratulate him on that as well.
Thank you. Thank you to you both. And Mr. Collins?
I've done research today, more than written the deed to Bowie, and we have decided to give you the official key to the city. I bet you didn't know we had one. But it started in medieval tradition that was meant to confer trust and honor. It grows in the medieval walled cities whose gates were guarded during the day and locked at night. The key symbolizes the freedom of the recipient to enter and leave the city at will, trusted by all friends of the city. So here you go. Key to the city.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Now that we've given all the Scots a big head, we'll move on to the next thing, but thank you both for how you represent the city.
Thank you.
Staff reports and monthly reports. Mr. Collins, I'm assuming you're wearing all the hats.
Yes, Mayor, I have several for you tonight, and I'll try to be brief on some, and I gave you some information. Some of this doesn't require any action, and we'll get into those in a minute. For the planning reports, you can see in front of you, we have permits for the months of July 2022 and August 2022, respectively, three accessory structure permits in July, two in August, one demolition in August, two grading permits in August, one non-residential permit, one pool permit in July, three in August, new residential, or residential new construction, seven in July, nine in August. That will taper off just a bit as we get into the fall. Obviously, those start to slow down. Once we get into December, January, those will pick back up. Residential mobile home, we had two permits, residential additions, renovations, we had two, one temporary structure, and one commercial sign permit in the month of July. That report indicates that we're a little bit slow on the permitting. We don't mind the slow on the permitting this time of year. We expect that. What that does not tell you in the planning department is how overwhelmingly busy we are on new submissions and applications for subdivisions. I've been in this business for about 20 years now. As far as development goes, proposals, matters being brought to the planning commission, this is probably the busiest I've seen in the last six months, over the last 20 years. I cannot tell you how many hours the planning department and engineering department puts into all of this. So you see the permits here. This is a result typically of work that took place eight, 10, 12 months ago. As we get into the spring, you will see a substantial increase in the numbers based on the work that's being done now. So while you see this and it appears a little slow, I can tell you that this, a little bit of slowness, is much appreciated in the planning and engineering department because they are overwhelmed with the workload they have today. But I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on those numbers.
Are there any questions on the planning report?
Specific to the planning report, Mayor, and in addition to, I distributed each of you just a one-page document that has a yellow highlight on that. You all have that in front of you. That is page two of our current ordinance, or the text from page two of our current ordinance as it relates to the Tree Bank Fund. The reason this is important is the line that's highlighted in yellow of this ordinance, and that's the last line in section 13409 at paragraph one at the top of your page. And it relates to Tree Bank funds that are remitted to the city, and it specifically identifies the use of Tree Bank funds that are remitted to the city. And it states, "Said funds in this account are to be used solely and entirely to provide landscaping on publicly-owned, publicly-owned, city of Fairview property and for no other purposes." And certainly that was well-intended at the time that this was drafted. The reason that this is important is, as of today, we have roughly $100,000 in the Tree Bank checking account. That money has been in there for some time. You may recall, we've talked about doing some landscaping plans, some master landscaping plans, things of that nature, and those are important. At Tuesday night's planning commission, there were a series of developments that were approved by the planning commission, and three of those developments included the remission of monies to the city's Tree Bank Fund for the removal or replacement of trees on some of the developments. The total dollar amount that was discussed at Tuesday night's meeting was approximately $490,000. We anticipate that all of these funds will be remitted to the city within the next six months, give or take. So if you take that $490,000 that was approved Tuesday night, add our 100 to it, we're now at $590,000 that will be available in the Tree Bank Fund. The reason that's important is that's going to require us to expand what we do with those dollars as it relates to Tree Bank, landscaping, all such as that. So the highlighted line that you see is our guideline for how we use the funds currently. There's no reason to take any action on this tonight, but what I would ask is that you simply review this line. As you're out in town at different parts, locations throughout the coming days and weeks, if you would just kind of consider what you might like to see us do with those funds as it relates to the public use of trees, green spaces, things of that nature. And we're going to need to put together some sort of plan so we can start spending some of those dollars, because we're going to have a substantial amount of money in the bank, and we're going to need to start investing that money back in the community. So we don't have those dollars in the bank today, but they are on the way based on the approvals from Tuesday night.
I have a question. So does that, can we use part of the money to hire, to do a master landscape plan?
I believe you can.
That is allowed.
And that will be part of the amended wording or revised wording that the Board of Commissioners decides they want to use the money for. So I would certainly let that be part of the conversation. We've had some conversations internally as well that you may want to include some hardscapes. I don't know that the Tree Bank Fund would have to be used necessarily and solely for the planting of trees. I don't know that we could plant $600,000 worth of trees in the city of Fairview reasonably. I think what we could do would be to create some areas of nature and tree enjoyment so that you may include a trail that doesn't exist, a path that doesn't exist, maybe some landscaping or other places, so we can improve some open spaces that give people the ability to enjoy not only the trees that we have, but new plantings and new areas of development. So I would try to be a little open-minded as to not just the planting of the landscaping, but the enjoyment of the landscaping as well. I think we do have an opportunity to expand on what we have now. So once we get those ideas back, we can get those, Mr. Potter, we can, you know, talk about those in a more open forum. But I do know with the resources we're going to have available, we're going to need to put together some plan and invest those dollars in a way that the community can enjoy. So.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Finance report?
The finance report, yes, Mayor. I have in front of you two documents. They're both entitled, First Bank at the top. They look very similar. One of the items has the date highlighted in green. That date is 6/30/2022. June 30/2022 was the last day of our fiscal year, and that just ended. The second document that you have is highlighted in yellow, and it's 6/30/2021. As you may recall, I sent you an email letting you know that the auditors have been in City Hall for the last three days. They were here Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. We got a very favorable initial report from them from our operations generally. While our financials have not been audited, I provided these documents for year review, and we don't have to go line by line, and then now I'll kind of give you the highlights of those. But our unaudited cash position, from June 30/2021 to June 30/2022, increased $1.4 million. June 30/2021, we had $1,200,000 in reserve. June 30/2022, we had $1,253,000 in reserve, and our cash balance on June 30/2022 was $1,150,000 greater than it was last year. So as we're going through this, we are financially healthy in a very good way. Once we get through the audit process and those numbers are confirmed, and we're confident there, what I just gave you is very, it's a lenient effort. I think we may have a little greater resource in that. Once we get to that point and we identify those numbers, we will fully, we will forward fund the reserve fund as we have been doing for the last couple of years. If those numbers hold true, we will likely enter February of this year with our reserve fund fully funded as it should be funded in 2028. So we are ahead of schedule on the reserve funding. Where that becomes important is once we fully fund the reserve fund, then we are no longer competing for resources to fund our reserve fund. Once the reserve fund's fully funded, then every year after that, those end-of-year surplus dollars, if we want to call them those, can be reinvested on projects, activities, things of the like of the city. So it's very important that we fund that reserve fund, or fully fund the reserve fund early, and I have every belief that we will be able to do that. So I've been eager for this day for a long time. There are a lot of people who've worked to put those financials together. That's not me. That's the staff of about 61 people who've bought in, and the ability to report to you tonight that we can do that is an incredible achievement for a city this size. So thank you for the work, and we look forward to investing those dollars in the reserve so that we can then reinvest the future dollars into the city. On the public works report, the only thing I have for you tonight is a reminder that our chipper service for the year is nearing its winding down. Chipper service will run through October. Encourage anyone who's going to be doing any landscaping on their residential property, if they've got some cleanup or other thing to do, I would encourage them to undertake that in the next couple of weeks, because we'll run the first, we'll run the month of October, and then that will be the end of our chipper service for the year. So if there's any work to be done, we'll need to get that done by the, really, the end of September, early October, and we'll start on the leaf service in November in the same schedule and manner that we have in the past. And I'd be glad to answer any questions on public works.
Any questions?
City manager report? I just have a couple of items for you. You recall that I sent you an email. We put out for bid the sidewalk project and the fencing project for the playground. We did have one pre-bid conference regarding the sidewalk. We put all those things together. By the time the bids closed, we had no bidders for either project. As I explained in an email, that sounds like a negative. That is, in fact, not a negative for us. We are required by law to put those projects out for bid or obtain those estimates for that work to be done. We haven't met that threshold. Given that, we can now reach out to individual firms, have them come in, make proposals, presentations, and select the firm that we choose to do that work. So this will be an accelerated process at this point for the sidewalk and the fencing. It doesn't seem like that when you're going through the formal bid process, but the fact that we did not get those opens the door for us to do the work on a little faster pace and do that. We've reached out to a couple of fencing companies already, and we think that we'll be able to have those resolutions for expenditures to you hopefully on October 20, which is the same night we'll have for you, the adoption of the master, or the 2040 comprehensive plan.
Any questions?
Lastly, the only thing I have for you.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, no, unrelated to that, under that, I very much appreciate the key to the city. The hometown hero is a pretty neat accomplishment, no question. You see those things, you hear about them, but the ability to participate is a pretty nice exercise, and I very much appreciate that. But the fact of the matter is, that award is a team award. I say that every meeting, I say it all the time, I cannot stress it enough. But this is a team operation. The team operation starts with the people in this room, the elected officials, the staff, and it filters its way down to everyone we have at the city. And I believe that award is reflective of everyone here. I have told everyone for years, and I will continue to say this, being elected or appointed to a position of leadership does not make someone a leader. It simply gives them the opportunity to lead. What they do with the opportunity will determine whether or not they're a leader. It's very simple. Leadership comes in a whole lot of different forms. People think city manager is the form of leadership, and it can or can't be, city commission, mayor, recorder. But I would also submit to you that the firefighter removing someone from a car in an accident is leading that scene. The police officer who's pulled someone over on a traffic violation is leading that incident. The public works director who's running the chipper service is leading that crew. So if you take the leadership roles and you expand that down, every position in the city, from the person who answers the phone to the person who sits in my seat, has to be able to lead, just as your seats have to be able to lead. So the idea that we get this award through Main Street media that comes to the city manager is simply a reflection of the leadership that's displayed by every person who's associated with the city. So I very much appreciate the votes and how that went, but those votes don't mean anything without the people actually doing the work. So, and that includes all of you and all the other 60 employees who work at the city. So thank you, thank you so much for the key. That does mean a lot. That's a pretty neat gift. That does mean a lot. That's, that's a pretty neat gift. But that key belongs to all of us. So, thank you very much. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, sir. Item ten, item nine, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Old business, there is none. New business, item eleven A, beer permit application for Nando's food truck. I think we had all the pertinent paperwork had been approved in our packet.
Mayor, are you reading from the updated agenda?
Well, maybe not.
My apologies. It's not up there.
That, that item was, there was a, a data amendment, agenda submitted, and that item was removed from that agenda.
I'm so sorry. I, I'm reading from the one that I printed from my own house.
My apologies. We, we did have a, an amendment for that, and that will become at the next meeting. In doing some research, we realized some things that need to be changed on our own ordinance before we can address that.
Okay. Thank you. I'm assuming that item B is still accurate?
We do have an item one. We just replaced it with something else. Do you want me to read that caption?
Okay. Let me hang on, because you put a new agenda up here, and I kind of pushed it over to the side because I wasn't going to use it. Okay. So, now this is eleven A. Do I need to go back and do anything else, or can we just start with eleven A? New business eleven A, resolution thirty dash twenty-two, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners to amend the City of Fairview Resolution four dash twenty-two, and further clarify Resolution four dash twenty-two. And I'm assuming that someone will tell us what that is.
Yes, Mayor. Resolution four dash twenty-two of this year was a resolution that established the city's election, or for the city to participate in the general election to be held on November eighth. That resolution, we sent that to the Election Commission. Mr. Grayville Election Commission sent that back and asked that we clarify language specifically, including not just the commission election, as we know the commission election, but to specify clearly the election of the mayor and two commissioners rather than three seats up, and naming those later in the resolution. So, what you have is an amendment that simply spells out the mayor and two commissioners rather than three elected seats in that, in that resolution. And then it states that those seats will, will become filled. The mayor will be elected by the highest vote getter in the mayoral race. The two commission seats will be filled by the first and second highest vote getters in the commission race itself. So, there's no substantial change to that. It simply clarifies those positions as requested by the Election Commission. There's, there's nothing that changes in our activity. We're just, for the Election Commission, clarifying those two titles of electives or elections.
We have heard the explanation of the resolution. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, so just to clarify one more time, Mr. Collins, so it would be broken, broken up into the mayor seat and then two commissioners?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So, there would be a mayor race and then a commissioner race, basically?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we were, we were already there. This just more clearly identifies those two races.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the row, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven B, resolution thirty-one dash twenty-two, a resolution of the City of Fairview to permanently terminate Harding Drive Northwest at the existing Stub Street cul-de-sac. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the row, please?
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Eleven C, resolution thirty-two dash twenty-two, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners authorizing the purchase of property and authorizing the city manager to execute all related documents, agreements, and contracts. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Collins, do you want to speak to this in any way?
Yes, Mayor. Members of the commission, you may recall that in the Series twenty twenty-one B bond issue, we secured about nine million dollars for some capital projects. And part of those capital projects included a reconstruction and improvement to Northwest Highway, specifically the intersection of Northwest Highway and Highway ninety-six. There is substantial development proposed for Northwest Highway as it exists. One of the developments includes a new, a newly created section of Northwest Highway that will connect over to Dice Lampley Road. The long stretch, the long straight stretch of Northwest Highway that takes you out to Highway ninety-six will be bordered by the Bellhaven subdivision that's been proposed. This resolution you have before you tonight gives me the authority to purchase approximately three and a quarter acres from the property owner nearest to the intersection of Highway ninety-six and Northwest Highway, so we can eliminate the dogleg, as we call it, at Highway ninety-six. If you're traveling on Northwest Highway toward Highway ninety-six, we'll purchase the property just before you get, or our property purchase will just start just before you get to the little two-lane bridge there, or one and a half-lane bridge, as it really is. And in your packet, you have two diagrams that show what we'd be purchasing. But our plan is to start just before you get to the, to the box culvert there. We would actually move Northwest Highway over about fifty feet, straighten it out to where the square intersection of Northwest Highway and Highway ninety-six. So, you wouldn't cross the bridge and take the sharp left. You would cross a new bridge. It continues straight through those woods until you got to Highway ninety-six and Northwest Highway, or the new Highway ninety-six and Northwest Highway. And then that will be a signalized intersection at Northwest and ninety-six. As you're traveling toward Highway ninety-six, where you get to the small bridge now, as soon as you cross the new bridge, which is going to be right, right there, as soon as you cross the bridge to the right in a wooded area, that two and a half acres will be the property used for a new fire station number two. We talked for some time for the need to build a new fire station. That would be the location of that site. We've met with Williamson County. They agreed that that site as well for some EMS questions and some future partnerships with the Williamson County, not only the EMS, but Williamson County Volunteer Fire. That would, that would be our, again, our second station. It would include the training facility for, for the fire department. That project for the road will start in earnest in, in January. All of the property develop, all of the development representatives and I, and all of the engineers met in this room yesterday for about ninety minutes to go over the preliminary design for the entire roadway project, which, by the way, is the biggest capital project the City of Fairview's ever undertaken. That's gone really well so far for the partnerships we've had. Once we get the road built, once we get the traffic signal installed, once we do all of those things, again, anticipated start date would be about twelve months from now. Forecasting out from that as it relates to the fire station number two to be installed on this property, our schedule right now calls for the selection of an architect for that building in the spring of twenty twenty-five, which is about two and a half years from now, with construction to begin in the spring of twenty twenty-six. So, this is an aggressive, aggressive capital improvement project, but it is substantial capital improvement project. So, that's a kind of a longer explanation that you probably wanted to hear for the use of that property, but is an absolute opportunity for the city.
Any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Communications from the mayor and commissioners, Commissioner Daw, I'm so sorry, Commissioner Butler. I was thinking how hoarse you sound.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Commissioner Lucas, and congratulations, Mr. Collins, on your awards tonight. I have nothing further, Mayor.
Did I hear the end? I'm so sorry. Vice Mayor.
I have spoken about a man that I had met driving down Chester. Not only Chester does he do this, but he had, I was watching him pick up trash with one of the grabbers and putting it into a bag. And I've seen him do this quite often. So, I stopped and spoke to him a little bit, and he had told me that he was having some health issues, and the doctor told him he needed to get out and walk more. So, he said, instead of just walking, I'm gonna pick up, you know, pick up trash and make our community more beautiful. So, I was real excited about that. So, I had, I didn't get his name. I've got his name now, and I just want to thank him. His name is Graham Perry, and he kind of has a long ponytail, and people may have seen him before, but just kind of wave at him or something, because I, I just think that's the coolest thing. Also, I'm excited for your community, your neighborhood, because y'all have been there a long time, and to protect your neighborhood is something that I think is the right thing to do. There are other subdivisions that are new that have connector roads, and, you know, there's a time when you connect, and then there's a time that I believe that we need to protect. So, I'm glad that the vote went your way, and thank you for coming out. That's all.
Commissioner Lucas.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the, the citizens, you, Mayor, on the proclamation. It's honestly embarrassing, to be honest, but I'm greatly appreciative of it. I tell people all the time, the, the truth of the matter is, the only thing that's good in me is Jesus. And Lord knows, I, I need a lot more of that. I won't preach, though, I promise. But, but that's the truth, and, but I am, I am thankful. Matter of fact, as, as I talk about that, I'm reminded, and I won't, I won't say a name because I don't want to get, bring a name into it, but last week, I was at this meeting, and I love this city, and my passion for this city, and my passion for where I believe this city needs to go, sometimes comes across the wrong way. And so, that was perceived a way that I didn't intend it last week with someone, and so I just want to apologize for that. Also, the, the, the Veterans Event, what was the date on that Veterans Event, again?
November twelfth.
November twelfth, okay. That's what I thought. I encourage this city to show up to that event. I've been honored to be at those several times. I know David is, is here tonight. I will not be able to be at this one. I have to be in Waverly that morning for disaster relief. But I encourage this, this city to, to get out and get involved in that. These men and women definitely deserve far more than what we give them in, in that day. But just come out and support them and be there for them. To Mr. Collins, thank you for everything that you've done. I've said it publicly. I'll say it again privately. Or, excuse me, I've said it. I'll say it again publicly. This city owes you a great deal of gratitude for the work that you have done. I'm reminded where we were six years ago when I got here, and where we're at today, just not even on, on a financial level, but the culture at City Hall has drastically changed. The culture within our staff has drastically changed. And I know it takes a team effort, but every team needs a leader. And you have been that leader, and people follow you, and rightfully so. And so, personally, as a commissioner, as a citizen, and as your friend, I'm very proud of what, what you've done here, and congratulations on your award. That's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to talk a little bit about influence. Influence is so important in the relationships that we have, to be able to influence each other in the very simple things and the very important things. And that influence comes from building those relationships with talking, with acting, all of these things. And it's, it's a good thing for the community to interact with the elected officials, to have that influence. So, we appreciate all of you for showing up. We hope you continue to show up, and we hope you interface with your elected officials often. Influence is important. Also want to talk about the, the BOC meetings and how influence is important. During Citizen Comments, you have three minutes to get some information out really quick, and many people say that is not enough time. And you're right, especially on those really important agenda items. So, when the BOC votes for the, the first time on the initial agenda item, that agenda item goes to a public hearing. And that is the opportunity for the public to come to the BOC meeting and have well over three minutes to talk about how they're either for or against that agenda item. So, when that agenda item is discussed, you're able to have influence over the entire board. So, it's either at that meeting on that agenda item, or you can ask for a meeting with that commissioner or whatever. But bringing that to a, the first reading opens it up for a public hearing where you can have as much time to discuss that agenda item with the entire board. I want to congratulate our two unsung heroes with the, the resolution, the key to the city. Great job. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, again, want to thank, I have done this publicly several times. I, I remember when we were elected and truly, I truly thought we would not make it financially, that we would be bankrupt and just part of the county. It was horrifying to sit at that conference table and hear how much money we're going to have to spend, and I was thinking, we don't have it. So, thank you for your leadership. Commissioner Lucas, thank you for yours. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we're adjourned.